Meeting ran late. And I need to finish eating my supper, so you don't want to watch that.
You need to what?
I had to finish eating my supper.
It's early, not Florida. You can't have.
Yeah, but I'm I'm home now up here and it's cold, but I'm still on Florida time. We same time zone, but we eat at three thirty in Florida.
I know, I was telling him before he came on.
All right, that's enough. I'm gonna shut up. I'm gonna eat.
All right.
I'm listening.
So this is the Maynard zoning board of appeals at seven P M. On the twenty fifth of March, twenty twenty four. And the the meeting is different tonight because we do not have any active cases today to discuss. But as I was looking through my notes here, there's a lot of stuff we can talk about, just zoning stuff. But before we get into that, I would like a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Mister Chair, I did receive um a a member who made some corrections. I I have adjusted them and they are as amended in the uh agenda and I highlighted the part that was changed so the board can see.
Oh, so I gotta find my agenda?
I can pull it up.
Yeah, would you please?
Just one minor uh change and. Let's see here. Okay, so if everybody had a chance to look at the earlier minutes.
Yeah.
Um, here is the amendment where. I just opened it. Sorry, guys, one second here. Let's save downloads. There we go, okay. Did you guys see that now?
No.
No.
You gotta open up and do a share.
I'm gonna have to stop it again, I guess. Let me uh stop share. Let's try it again.
Now we're getting somewhere.
Okay.
You're starting.
Yeah, this is where we just changed this one paragraph. I highlighted it for you. Yeah, it was incorrect what was there before, so I think I think. This is just a.
All right.
That's the only change I had.
All right, so do we get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February twenty six twenty twenty four uh meeting of the Maynard zoning board of appeals. As amended, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Second.
Hey. All in favor, uh Leslie?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
God?
Yes.
A.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes. And since we're not voting on any particular uh protocol case, I think we can all vote on this one. Because we're not, we're not alternates and whatever, we're just board members. So Brad's happy at that. I went, next item on the agenda here is I went to the CPTC, don't ask me what that means, conference. And several several things struck me as I went in. This is over at Holy Cross in Worcester. It was the most energetic audience that I've ever seen participate in anything, college, you know, work stuff, whatever. Those guys were into it. They wanted to know, they were taking notes, everybody was there, they buttonholed me afterwards in a couple of talks to talk to me more. Because I'd asked nasty questions of the speaker, that kind of stuff. And so the the other audience members are asking me what I got out of what, my answer from the speaker, they they were into it, lunch. They had to call us to get us out of lunch, right? Because we're sitting in these big round tables. It was a very fascinating meeting. You guys got the handout of the two that I could capture handouts for. And and I went to the ones on uh pre pre-existing conditions, pre-rights and so forth, and then um variances and special permits. And I was joking with Bill that maybe we should have a quiz and see how much you guys picked up, but there's a lot of text there. There's a lot of lot of stuff to pick up. But before I get into that, as they announced the beginning of this session, and we were just getting ready to go to our first meeting room, they they noted that the state legislature is drafting some legislation to require certification or CEU units, you know, con- continue education units for zoning board and planning board members. And so there'll be a continual education thing to keep current with all the stuff because they're finding there's a huge discrepancy between the different towns as to how they make rulings. And and I I think it's a great idea, besides you get a good lunch out of it. The lunch is was right up to par, it was still a very good lunch. And then they're they're also talking about the same thing for the conservation board people. So that that's just an aside to get into the meat of the stuff. But I I was taking pen scratch notes, you know, all day and my hand was getting tired and I can't read my writing anyway, so I tried to just capture what I could. And and I said the best thing to do is just hand out what what I got, so you guys can read it directly and and pick up what you think you want to learn about from that. One of the things that struck me in this uh one or two family thing, and they talk about a special permit in our section five point one point three about uh a one or two family uh for a special permit. The only criteria for the special permit is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformity to the neighborhood. That's the only special permit criteria to evaluate is not substantially more detrimental. None of the other things for a special permit fit for a one or two family special permit when you're doing a uh like a a setback issue. And so we have to be careful which special permit criteria we're looking at when we're when you're dealing with a special permit. And that I that caught me off guard. I didn't realize, and then I reread it, that that's it, that's the only thing for a one or two family.
I thi- I think one thing if I could Paul on that, the 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 thing to remember, when we do our criteria, those are cons- things to consider. That's why that's there, you know, the.
It it's things to consider for the other special permits. The only one for this one is more detrimental to the neighborhood. And you you might wanted to define what the neighborhood is and what detrimental might be, and that might be where the other issues come in. But the way it is phrased here, it is specific to that. Whereas if you go and look in our code or our our bylaws for the other special permit issues, it's it's paragraphing, listing two or three other items in there. So we just have to be careful on that for this, and this is majority of what we've got. You know, most of our cases are dealing with the residential one or two family phenomenon. So another interesting thing on the setback issues, we always worry about, you know, how many inches or feet over the setback line. But we don't talk about the volume change. And what these guys were mentioning several times is the volume that is going to be increased as part of the new construction over that would be trespassing in a setback. How much greater is that volume going to be? And I don't know if we even have it in our bylaw to consider the volume. But that's that's another thing there.
Okay, Paul, can I ask you a question?
I'll try to answer it.
Um, what were the what were the two modules that you said that you uh you took the CP?
That one I think I can answer. I just find a note here what the formal titles were.
vested rights.
Vested rights and non-conforming uses structures and then special permits and variances.
Okay, all right.
And then the one I went, the third one I went to i- is frankly an alphabet soup of of state agencies permitting and preserving affordable units, resources for ZBAs and PBs. And that those initials were the easy ones. When I start talking about the fourteen different state agencies you gotta worry about, I says, give me a handout, and of course I did not. Because it was a dialogue between a town uh participant and one of his consultants on how how to manage the affordable units. And his idea was to make a trust, or the consultant's idea was to make a trust run by the town but independent of the town to keep the affordable units in perpetuity. You know, and one when one comes available, they go in and and the trust goes in and brings it up to standards again after they've been trashed, cleans it up and keeps it as an affordable unit with lotteries and all that other cool stuff. And I don't know anything about all that. I thought maybe I would learn something about forty B. There was really no mention of forty B. It was just an alphabet soup of state agencies and and how to run a trust. So I lost out on that one.
Paul, just a note here for that, um let's not forget, uh John is on the Affordable Housing Trust, so when we have some questions after, maybe he can clear up some of them too.
Good. And we we always ask in perpetuity.
But you lose track of them, and and this this particular last lecture was to try to capture the ones that fall off the radar. You know, they had to do surveys, annual uh censuses almost to try to keep track of everything. And and calling on the people, you know, and you still follow the rules of that affordable unit, how much you make and so on and so forth. It was just too much for me. But anyways, back back on some of my scribble notes, I I tried to translate what I could because, you know, a week went by before I got the electronic version. And my hand scribbles were even worse at that point, so I might have lost some of the information here. Um, one that we don't have in our definitions that I could find is an accessory structure. Does an accessory structure impact the setbacks?
That we do have at one point accessory structure is uh like a a a tool shed, that type of thing.
Yeah, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, there there. We do have, tha- that is addressed. We have it. It's it's not something I deal with a lot, but we do have that.
Okay. Uh.
The key, the key for that is under two hundred square feet. Under two hundred square feet, we don't look at it.
Hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty for sheds accessory uses. That's a hundred and twenty square feet.
Is a hundred and twenty?
Yeah.
All right.
That that's for an accessory, that's for an accessory use of like a shed or it's supposed to be a shed or a garage.
A hundred and twenty, okay.
A hundred and twenty square feet seems very small for a garage.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
For the car.
Was e- even with the even with the uh the electric cars, the little ones.
Right, so that was, the idea behind the shed is if your shed was under a hundred and twenty square feet, a hundred and twenty square feet or less, you wouldn't have to get a building permit to put it up.
Yeah, another another word that they struggled with was substantially. What is substantially? When it goes to substantially more detrimental or um what was the other one? There's another substantially. And oh, for for variance, a substantial hardship. And what is substantial? And so when it came to substantial hardship, I raised my hand and I asked the guy, give me an example of a substantial hardship. And this is a guy that's that's non-stop chatter. For two hours, he was chatter, 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 drowning us.
This is a fellow planner, now hold on.
Yeah, but he was still non-stop chatter, and when I asked the question, he stopped. He could not grab something out of thin air, he had to think about it. And the point is for a variance, substantial hardship is an extremely hard thing to find. The example he gave was an elderly couple that required a live-in nurse. And to get the live-in nurse, they had to put a wing on or an addition or something, and that was running into the setback. And he said that's an example that passed uh the the judge uh decision. But other than that, he couldn't find anything. So Bill and I this afternoon spent some time pawing through one of his law books. And they came up with a couple other ones, but the 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 point is if we have to deal with a variance, all those criteria for a variance have to be met. And the one that's a real challenge to deal with is substantial hardship.
And and what I didn't understand, uh Paul, just to ju- on our discussion today, because I read it as that also uh a hardship cannot be of a personal nature, and so if you have a a a nurse for this person, isn't that personal? And so obviously, there's there's some inconsistency there, because if 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 this board asked me, you know, my opinion would be, well, no, because we can't. And I maybe I'd be wrong, I mean, based on rulings, but that what would a what would a what would a personal nature be then?
I I don't know, and and the 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 main topic literally of both sessions I went to is how terrible our state law is. And you you look at those paragraphs and you get three hundred words in one sentence. I mean, come on, guys. And so my conclusion is they wrote that to keep lawyers employed. Because that's.
It it is purposely ambiguous, so it can be appealed.
Yeah. And the appeal requires lawyers and they get the big bucks.
We've been trying uh under my uh my professional uh association, there has been an effort for the last, at least fifteen years uh each year to amend the uh the um chapter forty A. And and a lot of little things, and I mean, they're in place. It's not like we just want to go do it. It's like, here's a piece of legislation for here. Here's a piece of legislation for here, and for whatever reason, it keeps getting pigeonholed. But with the MBTA community now, a lot of that's coming to the surface, as you can see, a lot of the little if you look at MBTA community, there's a lot of little subtopics in there that address these, which is pretty interesting.
So another thing that I I want to keep this moving, because there's there's a lot of cool things here, so on. I had not heard of the powers test. The powers test is three questions. And it comes from some case by some guy named Power. I don't know if he was the applicant or the defender, whatever, but the first one is, does the use, the proposed use reflect the nature and purpose of the non-conforming use prevailing when the zoning took place? And then, number two, is there a difference in the quality or character or degree of the resulting use compared to the previous, the original use? And number three, is the current use different in kind in its effect upon the neighborhood? And so it's in the handout stuff that you got forwarded. But it's interesting thing, because that's held up many times in in various appeal cases that you have to answer all three. One of them's a yes and the other one's a no. I forget which right now, it's in it's in the handout. But that powers test is the simple way, if you believe that, to figure out if if it works. So yeah, that was cool. And then my question, because I heard this talk, oh, the first one is, it has to be yes, and the other two have to be no. And then definition of non-use or abandonment, and it should be two years in the bylaws. I checked and our bylaws has it as two years, so we're cool. So a non-use or an abandonment of a structure loses its characteristics after that two-year period. And along with that, there is a question, if it is not allowed, then is it abandoned, or excuse me, is it prohibited? And the example here is Airbnbs. If it's not expressly allowed, is it prohibited? And that was another thing that to go into. So one one thing that that listening to the, a lot of this is basically court cases to describe what they think the law means. You know, when a judge came up with what he thought the case was versus what the law says. And it says, okay, you got this in your bylaws, town council reviewed it, it went to town vote. It was then went to the attorney general to be be approved. Therefore, it ought to be a good law, a good bylaw, and the answer is no. Good luck on appeal for anything, because they just wrote what they wanted. So anything we put out there in a good appeal case, you could lose. So that gets me into an area of findings. And again and again, these guys were talking about whatever we find has to be very clearly described. What what are we finding? You know, it's not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. We don't think it is. You need to give an exact, clear explanation of that finding that is not more detrimental. And it has to be specific to this property. And and one that strikes me is, did we do it right? When it was that front porch addition, where everybody else on the street had a little roof over their front porch, and these guys wanted a roof over their front porch. You can't say because George has it, Sam can have it too. It has to be unique to that property. The finding is that that property is okay with that. And I don't I don't know if our phraseology in our decision was strong enough to support that if there, you know, there wasn't, but if there was an appeal to that. And it's that kind of stuff that that I worry about. And then substantial hardship, it's not financial, it must be to the premises. What is substantial hardship to the premise? That makes it unique in the neighborhood. Soil and topography, that's that's one. But what is the hardship? And and that's some, we don't get that many variances because it's such a tough standard that most of our stuff goes to special permit, which is, it feels good, let's do it, but still, that's a finding. How do we make sure that finding is strong enough to stand up that grumpy neighbor? So uh newspapers. Uh, there is significant work being done evidently because a lot of towns are in the same boat we are that doesn't have a newspaper. So how do you publish your your notices? I don't know what they're coming up with, but they say it's in the works.
Well, other towns list in Action Unlimited.
Yeah, I've suggested that and and Lisa says, no, it's not good enough. Even though it gets more towns than even a paid newspaper did.
I, yeah, that's true. Um, no, we 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 advertise in uh Metro West Daily News.
I don't even know where it is now.
Well.
Didn't even know it still was around.
Yeah, it's right next door. It's at Russell's, that's what ours, but but I I understand your point.
So we gotta, you know, stay tuned for that is how that develops. Um, another another thing I picked up on, and I keep forgetting this, is the numbers that the the scheduling numbers for for making sure we don't get screwed up. Special permit of variance, it's sixty-five mi- days maximum from the application. Uh, and fourteen days before you can have a hearing. The special permit action, final action, in other words, when we vote on it has to be within ninety days of the close of the hearing. The variance is within a hundred days from the application date. And then the special permit filing is within fourteen days of the decision. But the variance filing is within a hundred and fourteen days of the application. You know, you you gotta have this in a chart to figure out when, you know, when you're supposed to do what. And that's why I dump it on Bill at the end of each case, so that he's in trouble, because he's supposed to know everything.
I haven't been locked up yet.
Yeah. So one of the other items that I that I had in my notes was, when do we close what? Bill rephrased it, I think, a little bit. Uh, but as you've noticed, I get tongue-tied at the end of each hearing as as to what are we supposed to close for this, and when do we close that, and and when do we vote, when we deliberate? And that came up at these discussions, and this afternoon, Bill and I asked Lisa meet, our attorney. And she she was in agreement, wholeheartedly, with one one exception. You you don't have to close anything until it is all done. You've had your deliberation and you've had your vote. You can have that all in in the public, open meeting, that way you can get more information back, you know, when you discover something. But if you close it too soon, you get into deliberations, say, oh, I need more info, you can't. So it's better to keep everything open until you're right up to have the vote, you've made the motion, then you just vote, or you can just close everything and then vote. Or I mean, vote and then, you know, close everything at the end. The one, however, is if you have a rather contentious discussion. And and if you can close it down, then you can say, guy, you're out of order, we're not hearing you anymore. You know, that part of the meeting's done. We've only had a few of those. We we might have another one coming up, but that that's just a prelude to what Bill's gonna tell you later on. But for the most part, I I also realize that I'm delinquent in following a protocol. I need to have a written script to describe what we're going to do at the beginning of the meeting to tell the petitioner, the applicant what to expect. You know, we're gonna have this open thing, he's gonna talk, the neighbors are gonna talk, whatever, we're gonna ask questions. To have that all verbalized ahead of time, and it has to all be through the chair so that that whoever, Paige or me or whoever's there, can say, yes, sir, let hear hear what you have to say. And just, you know, try to keep it under control. And and where this becomes more challenging is if we get a a troublesome person in the audience. And we can't shut them down. How how do we control that person that just keeps interrupting? If it isn't through the chair? If it's remote, Bill can hit the mode and the mute button. If it's in person, and it can get pretty uh raucous, I've heard, I haven't seen anybody in person, it can get pretty raucous, and Bill says, he just goes next door and calls the men in blue. And 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 they can control it. But I I don't know how to handle that in person, other than what Bill said, and that's sort of like a weird thing to do. Sorry, sir, I'm gonna call the cops on you, you know? So again, on 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 the findings, my note here says refrain from simply reciting the applicable criteria. We need to say why the applicable criteria is satisfied. And if if we can reflect on that at the meeting and say, okay, this setback is de minimis, the setback change, that that might be okay. Or or like that house on the on the the dead-end street that we had, the unknown street. Their riverfront, whatever it was. There's no traffic. We we outlined a whole series of things, why that construction could happen there because there was nothing in the way. There was no impact to the neighborhood, that kind of stuff. But some of the other ones, we need to be a little more uh aggressive in defining what we are finding. Does that make sense? I hope so.
Yeah, Paul, Paul, quick, quick question. So are you are you gonna try to um have a bit of a script for yourself to to
Yeah, I have to.
Keep keep this in order. I mean, I I chaired, I chaired two other committees, and I know I have to have my my little checklist in order to make sure I don't miss something, and and still inevitably. Make sure I don't miss something. And, and still inevitably I miss something.
Yeah, I, I have to. Bill, Bill was starting to do that with his, uh, staff report stuff. But I, I need something word for word. You know, the two-minute thing in the beginning. And then, uh, okay, any more questions? Let's, let's go to a, a discussion period or, or whatever we wanna do, but I gotta do that.
Yeah, perfect, perfect.
But because I this thing isn't working as strong as it used to.
Well, and you get, and you get caught up in the, in, in, in the discussion of what's going on and what decisions you try to make. And it's hard to remember. So you have to have a checklist. Yep. All right. Good. Thank you.
And, and you know, just in, in that discussion period, I, I like to also get it like a straw vote or a, a, a feeling, you know, where you guys are going. Is it favorable or not favorable? And, and just as an example, Lisa me this afternoon reminded us that we make motions in the affirmative. Even if it's, we're all dead set against it, we make the motion in the affirmative. So that when we deny the motion, we vote against the motion, we are voting negative. And, and that way, because if we turn it, if we vote against it and it was a negative, that's not necessarily a positive. But if we vote against the positive, it's negative.
Right?
Yeah, I had to ask that.
Example? So you're talking about referring to?
The example. Just saying I vote, I, I make a motion to deny blah, 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 blah.
No, no, you make a motion to approve.
I know, but he asked for an example of.
Yeah, and, and Bill's gonna do it. He volunteered.
So whatever the, you make the motion affirming whatever the applicant is asking for. So for example, uh, the applicant is asking for a relief on a twenty-foot setback to build a drive-through, okay, at the single-family house. And, okay, it's a crazy idea, but what, what they're saying is that for, for the to keep the process smooth, somebody would say, okay, let's make a motion to approve the variance allowing a, a, a twenty-foot setback reduction for a drive-through. Which is, we all agree, nope, that's a goofy idea, okay? I don't have to vote affirmative for. Okay, but you're reflecting what the applicant has requested. You're making the motion and then one, two, three, four, five, say, no. We're not, we don't agree, no, denied. And so that way, it keep, for the continuity of, of decision writing and so on, it does make it easier. And, and it's, you learn something every day, and I think this is a good, a good example.
Another, another example, Bill, we've had a few cases in the past of the, a building commissioner uh, event. Where building commissioner issues a, a cease and desist. And if we vote, if we say, yes, we agree with you, building commissioner, or we made the motion to agree with the building commissioner. And then you guys all say no. Then the building commissioner's thing is denied. And they, and they, and the homeowner is home free. And if we vote yes with the building commissioner, then the issue is, okay, he stands, but now the homeowner has to go through all sorts of hoops to get permits and variances and whatever, like the artists, I think we had that with the artists.
So if you, yes, if the building commissioner, i- if somebody is appealing a decision of the building commissioner, which we will be having shortly. And the, the motion, after we'd heard everything, Paul or, or, or one of the board would say, uh, I have a motion to approve the applicant's appeal of the building commissioner's decision and overriding it. And then everybody would say yes or no.
And a no would mean you're holding up the building commissioner's answer.
That's correct.
Yes means go pound sand, building commissioner.
Well, I think that's how it's written in the book.
Yeah.
By the way, we still hanging on to our, uh, summer street paperwork.
Yes.
And so um, what else do I have here? I think looking at my agenda versus Bill's interpretation of it, development of findings, that the meeting, this, meeting control and the protocols, yeah, I, I gotta spend some time on a computer and, and write down what I'm supposed to say. And, and maybe Paige, you could help me with that, because you're pretty good at that stuff as well. And, and then, and, and then we can, uh, you know, run off the same, same structure. So, um, I think that's what I had. There's a couple of other, uh, to-do lists. Zoning bylaw stuff. One, one that I'm struggling with is this, uh, section on the, the five, one, three, five, one, four stuff. And a lot of the action happens in a paragraph that doesn't have a paragraph number. I'm calling that the orphan paragraph. And Bill and Lisa and I have had several discussions on what can and can't be said and how to say it. And we were ready to go. And then Bill said uncle, because he was getting ready for town meeting. This was two months ago, but he's still getting ready for town meeting. So at some point, I would like to get, maybe it's just more than me, because if it's more than me, he'll have to listen to us. Because right now it's just been he and I go back and forth on this one section. Because this section five, one, three, four, five is the essence of where a majority of our cases are. One or two family variances and special permits. And I wanna make it cleaner so that an applicant can understand what they need to do. And cleaner for us to say, no, you can't. Or that's easy, here the criteria and you're, and you're in. Because right now it's a little confusing.
Uh, can you just repeat that reference, what?
Five, five, one, three, non-conforming structures, five, one, four variants. Five, one, five, non-conforming, single and two-family residential. And then after all that, before you get to five, one, six, there's this giant paragraph with no number.
Oh, I see that, okay.
And shame on whoever didn't catch that in the last rewrite, but that's, that's something that should be embedded or captured on a new number, something. Because if you read the five, one, five, it says subsections five, one, five, one, five, one, five, two, and five, one, three, apply below. And then you have this orphan paragraph that's none of them.
Well, I think, you know, the idea of rewriting the whole section is, is the practical way to go. I just have to wait, the, after, this town meeting is quite big, you know, I've got, I'm not complaining about my, uh,
You're just calling uncle, I know.
Bylaws, but I have, the firearms people wanna shoot my kneecaps. I got the ADU people wanna put me in a nursing home, and I got the MBTA community wanna run me over with a bus. So I've got my hands full.
I know, I know.
As soon as it's done, we'll get on it. And then.
But to me, I, we need to get that cleaned up, even if it's the same legal structure, but we can understand it.
Totally.
And, and we can run off our notes until the next town meeting to codify it. But in the meantime, we'll have translated it and something we can make sense out of. And, and the thing that struck me going to these conference proceedings is that that orphan paragraph is right out of state statute. It's a cut and paste out of statute.
Out of forty-eight?
Yeah, somewhere, it's in there somewhere. I, I, they pulled it right up at one of the, the lectures, I says, I know that paragraph.
Yeah, it looks like forty-eight, section six and seven. To me, from under the, under your vested rights.
It could very well be.
That you took.
Yeah.
That's what my notes that I took, said about that, but while ago.
So anyhow, the next pieces of it, I guess, is other bylaw stuff. I, I heard some stuff from Bill this afternoon about the firearms. They're gonna do some more editing right at town meeting, is that right, Bill?
Yeah, it's, it's a, um, based on our planning board, I hearing for the, the, which by and large is very well received. Um, and you know, Leslie and Paul put a lot of work behind the scenes into this particular one and Chris on the planning board. But, uh, one of the, um, posed uh, uh, categories that there was a, a pretty significant backlash against was having shooting ranges uh, in the downtown overlay district. No problem with the firearms businesses. But people felt, I say people, the people that were at the, at the hearing uh, felt that that was that was a bridge too far. And so what we're proposing, and, and, and the planning board had no problem with that. Um, because, uh, two of the, the five members voted against the, uh, bylaw just because of that specific clause. So it was a little bit of a kerfluffle for the planning board in that we're saying like, well, if we'd known this ahead, you know, we could have just tweaked it, because it only felt that strong, I don't think. But in any event, uh, I think, uh, it will be, uh, uh, just an amendment on the floor, we're gonna, I've discussed it with town council today. Town council's gonna write the, um, amendment and then we'll have one of our super troopers, uh, bring it forward and, um, propose the amendment and that would be the only difference. So you could still have indoor shooting ranges in the central, I mean, in the, uh, business district, just not the central business district, which is essentially a triangle downtown.
What will, um, what will happen about the shooting range that's in the old police station, I mean?
It's funny you ask that. I was there today. I didn't, never seen it and I, I had to go over and see it. Um, nothing, because it's not, it's, it's not a shooting range. It was a, you know, no, no, it's not a shooting range, so it's, uh, it's a use that's discontinued. Uh, that was, it, you know, in, would have fallen under government or public safety or something like that. But, uh, if, at this point, like we just said, you know, it's been over two years. Probably been more like twenty years since it's been a shooting range, so, um, no, there's no issue.
Okay.
So the other, the other thing I wanted to explore, we started talking about non-conforming lots in residential districts. And it's, it's not getting the energy that it should get to make anything happen.
That's because of me, Paul.
Yeah.
No, no, Brad, Brad, Brad showed up, Natalie showed up. I, I just don't have the bandwidth until after this town meeting. It's, that's on me, it's not these guys.
Okay, but I, I'm just wondering how to make it happen. And if you're gonna wait till after town meeting, that, that's fine by me.
Have, I, I have to, to give it, to give it my attention.
Yeah, but my, 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 my point is, once that happens, once your town meeting is over and the distraction's gone, what do we do? I mean, you say Natalie and Brad. Um, is that the formal task force? Do you want me to help out and cause trouble? I mean, how, how do we wanna move that forward?
I, well, my preference would be to have a, a discussion with all of us uh, about that and, and, you know, there's different ways we can go. We could, um, you know, it, it it might be a good idea to get some outside help, apply for grant to help us with this. You know, to, to do some of the research that needs to be done, or we might be okay. Brad has a good head for, um, the, uh, uh, the, the our GIS, um, information is significant, but I don't know exactly what to do with it. It's not a goof. This one is not like a, a line or two that we can change. Uh, so, yeah, it, this is, this is significant. It'll be revolutionary. But, but it is, um, something that is, is not a drive-by.
No, no, yeah, we need the data to figure out what we can do.
I mean, maybe Brad can, Brad, can you elaborate on what?
Sure, um, we, we, um, we got a, um, an Excel spreadsheet from, that was generated by the town. Uh, for what purpose, I'm not exactly sure. But it has every property listed. Um, and I think it's probably in alphabetical order, I'm not sure, not in a, it's not done by neighborhood and it, it doesn't show, as far as I can tell, uh, what zone or what zoning district it's in. Well, that just gives the lot data, yeah, so it's, it's not a hundred percent useful, but then again, there might be some stuff on there, there are, there's at least I know fifteen categories, fifteen, you know, columns of data on it. So some of it is useful probably and some of it is probably not useful. Um, so I, I, I thought that the
The thing I'd like to make sure we don't deal with is owner names. I, I don't, I don't wanna make this personal, I just wanna have the, the data.
Right.
And if the person, the owner's name is on there, uh, maybe we drop those columns or something.
Well, one of the, yeah. Exactly, if that was the case, because there's, there's a lot of stuff on there that is of no value, uh, at least at this point, the initial point. Um, so the approach, um, talking with Natalie and Bill is, was trying to figure out uh, important, important first step is what zoning districts we look at first. And then say we're gonna choose S one. Um, and then go through S one and figure out what, um, how much of it, it really is conforming, how much of it is not conforming. And look at subsections of, of, of the properties. Perhaps individual properties to see how it looks and how they mi- mix and match together, to see if it really is a, a problem with the, the zoning categories, uh, categories uh, for that particular area.
So what, what I envision is you've got two sets of criteria, one that might be in the database and one that's not. The one that might be in the database is like the frontage and the square footage. The ones that might not be in the database is where the building is located within that.
Right, those are the plot plans that would, that would have that information. If they're available.
Are they available?
Um, some are, um, apparently, apparently to get, to get to them, um, some of them are online. And Julia is the one who knows how to get into that, but it, it, that basically goes through uh, the building commissioner's office or the building inspector's office, who, who ends up with plot plans. So to be able to, you know, access the registry of deeds, find plot plans, um, might be something that can be done.
Hey, Brad.
But we haven't, we haven't got to it, we haven't gotten that far along yet, but yes, plot plans are, are an important thing. You know, figure, or at least for us. Yeah.
Do you think, would you agree that, uh, one of the things that we, we kinda hammered out would be that we want to decide on a specific goal for the project though, like we wanna know what we're trying to do exactly. And in this case, you know, we, we, we need that data to make any sort of, to make the next step, to find out what the goal is. So in other words, you know, are we trying to establish that zoning was in some cases, like or perhaps blocks was applied erroneously and not appropriate, or are we trying to say we wanna make these conforming, or are we trying to say we wanna, you know, what, whatever the case is, right?
Sure. Yeah, because what we've been also looking at is, is perhaps, um, a lot should be, a, a particular lot should be zoned differently, but not be, like, if you have a seven thousand square foot lot, that's in an S two neighborhood. You know, that doesn't really make a lot of sense. So perhaps that there's, uh, some way of taking that particular lot and reclassifying it. You know, there's something more appropriate, but to be able to do that, we wanna see if there is some commonality between the lots in that S two area that are small lots like that, and see if there's a lot of them, or if there's just all of them, or, you know, or, or the ones that are conforming are outliers. Kind of like on the example that I did on Glendale Street, with a person who was gonna build an addition and that was the S two, and there's only two lots that were actually, you know, one or two lots that actually, uh, you know, were conforming into S two and the whole area. So those are sort of the things to start, that we wanna start looking at. But I, I think the goal overall is to try to, um, to, to make it so, uh, homeowners know what they can do and we know what we would let homeowners do. Know what they can do and we know what we would let homeowners do. Uh based on, you know, a better zoning. You know, um definition for a particular lot.
That was, I mean, that's, I think you summed it up.
Excellent. So what I what I'm looking for tonight is just some kind of. Timeline to get started, yeah, even nibbling at it and Bill's been super busy. But after town meeting. Would there be like a regular weekly meeting or monthly meeting, or what's your vision?
Well, I think we need to um set some goals for, you know, what information we're gonna go out and look for right away, see what we have. So I think in the beginning, we would probably have um more meetings. Or we- we- weekly, at least weekly meetings, um and then, you know, maybe. Uh take some time off while while people are, you know, crunching the data and finding the data, just the the information might be everywhere. And trying to find out certain stuff, so it's a matter of coming up with what steps we're gonna take first, you know. You know, in terms of like, like what you're talking about, Paul, is finding um. Finding what the buildings are that are on these particular lots, you know, where they're located on the lots. So finding the the lot itself. That's nonconforming and then finding out what structures are on lots that are nonconforming, so maybe you can come up with criteria of. How many, how many ways a particular lot is nonconforming, you know, is it one, just the front edge, is it? To the front edge and the square footage, you know, uh is it a width of the lot, you know, uh it's. Then building on the lot, you know, is it more than twenty five percent or twenty percent, whatever your lot in that that particular S one zoning? Like it's, you know, and then there's, then you go to setbacks, you know, so. How many nonconformities are there on any on a given, you know, property?
Or part of it. Try to try to find a common denominator, do we need an S one and an S two?
Right.
Versus the general. And and how do we put it together to make it more efficient for understanding what the issues are for any particular lot?
Sure.
There's a lot of work that could be done there, but as Bill says, it's revolutionary and you know. It's it's worthy of something going beyond Maynard if we can figure it out.
I think I think one of the questions I'm gonna ask of the participants. Um, in all this early on, and Brad, this will be something you could chew on and Paul as well. Do we wanna look at applying for a technical assistance grant if I could find something out there? Where we have an outside firm that may, you know, I could, I maybe I will. We get a lot of grants, some, most of the technical assistants. Are exactly that, they do what they say they're gonna do, their housing production plans are complete streets evaluations and stuff. And you get it, you do get data that is scattered, but you sometimes you don't get the drilling down that you expect. Because the grant may be modest, on the other hand, it really gives you a foundation to build from. So that would be one of the questions that we may wanna chew on early on, do you want me to start looking for? Uh, technical assistance grants where somebody could come in and we could say, okay, we have this problem. We want a solution that can help us in this area with the intent of establishing this. You know, and and we have, we should probably talk about that and think about that some more.
My my answer would be yes, once we have figured out what we're looking for.
Exactly.
You know, if you if you wanna do the survey to find out what kinda assistance is available. And then we can match that with what we find we need. And then, I don't know, your lead time and trying to squeeze some money out of something.
Well, and and yeah, right now, I I I'm on a, I'm on sewer, uh looking for sewer stuff, water stuff, sidewalk stuff, so I'm. I'm coming across all of it.
So are you gonna find sidewalk sidewalk money for Concord Street?
I am trying to find specifically. I have, a- a- and the toll gate too, when you go through, it's.
Yeah, the slow, I wanna put in giant speed bumps. This is, cuz when you get a tractor trailer going through a twenty five miles hour zone at forty, that's a little insane.
It is crazy.
Yeah, but those make a lot of noise when they hit those speed bumps, you won't, you might not like the noise they make.
The worst ones are the dump trucks, because the dump truck guys love to use the engine brakes.
There's a panther behind Leslie I see creeping in.
So I I only have a couple more items, you know, think about that that stuff for after. Your your town meeting stuff. Um, one thing that I have been bugging Bill on and and Brad, you raised some questions at the last. Uh zoning board thing. About what happens when somebody comes to town hall to get a ZBA permit or variance. And. What we get to actually show up as as an event in front of the ZBA is a fraction. Of the number of people that go to town hall. So what happens to those people that go to town hall? Bill smiles at him and says, go away. And what I would like to know is who are those people? What what they were asking for, what's their address? So that if they're just working it through and trying to come up with a better. Application, that's one thing, but if Bill is steering all the the very weak cases out the door. So we don't see him, and all we get are the cases that are likely yes votes. Is that? Tainting our job too much that we're just getting spoiled with the yes votes? Or is Bill doing us a great service by keeping it simple on our workload since we're getting these premium bucks from the town? So I I'm just throwing it out, as a as a general question, Bill and I have chatted about it a little bit already. And I I'd just like to get the feedback from you guys as to. What you would like to know about the cases or the potential cases that we don't see. Jerry.
Personally, I don't care about the cases we don't see, that's my take on it. Um, I believe that Bill does a great job of filtering the cases and Bill, you know, can ask the the potential. Person, eh, specific questions, uh he can, you know, send them after more information. Uh, Bill can get the whole thing settled, it's those that can't be settled in the office. And need to come before the zoning board of appeals. That's all I wanna see, I'm not, you 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 may have fifty, but we get to see ten. Fifteen, but I I don't have a, at least for my benefit, I don't have a need to see. The ones that uh pass muster with Bill, that's my take.
Okay, anybody else? Paige.
Um, I agree with what Jerry was saying, but I'm wondering if maybe we can expand or update our applications. To be more clear on the exact information that we're looking for in terms of narrative and supporting. Documentation, like the types of plans to help people prepare. More extensive applications before they even get to the town and maybe that could result in some additional self-selection before they even get to Bill also.
Okay, that's a good point, because the the uh application that was sent around the 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 building commissioner appeal. I pushed back on that because he didn't follow the rules. There's a lot of stuff on that current application that it just isn't there. So Bill, Bill is, you know, corresponding with the applicant and trying to get that cleaned up. But Leslie, John, any comments?
I mean, I trust that Bill is filtering out the ones that he's sure cannot pass. And. Um, I trust him on that. But I think uh Paige's point is good. That maybe there's something in the language that's ambiguous that makes them think that they have a case when they don't, I don't know.
John?
I was wondering. Bill, for the ones that you do say, don't bother, don't bother going to the Z the board. How do you track though, do you track those, is there like a spreadsheet and say, okay, I got these twenty this week, but? Only two of them really ranked it.
No, no, I don't keep a spreadsheet on them because typically, and I had one right literally. Like five minutes after Paul walked out today, I had one like, could you stay a minute? But but um, no, I don't, I'm like, and I don't say you can't apply, and they'll say. And they say typically, Rick, the building commissioner will come in and say, hey, Bill. Here's a guy who would like to do X, Y, or Z, can you take? This person through the next step of the process? And tell them, you know, what you think, how this will go, and I'll say, here's A, B, or C, how do I think it would go? Well. You know, I think this is a reasonable. Uh project, and if it was me, yeah, I would be inclined to go for it. On the other hand, I may say, um, if there was a tornado, I wouldn't pitch a pop tent. And and um, you know, it's like that's. So I don't, I, to me, it's the right thing to do in terms of a service to the public, because. Uh, you know, A, I don't wanna have somebody come in and just be. Furious at me after they've been denied, and B, I don't wanna put this board in a position of saying, no. You're, what are you, you, what kinda goofy idea is this, who, you know, and and um. It's a tough one, but I mean, I do my best with it. And um, now, I do understand as a curiosity, because I have brought this topic up before. And um, I mean, I happen to know off the hand or a few of them, I don't think any of you. Well, at least majority of you would be pleased if I told you that it were in terms of like, like, are you nuts? This is, yeah, I mean, it's not like these are closed calls. It's not like my my mail is getting wet on the front porch. You know, um, so.
Can you, can you give us an example of something that you would, that you've seen in the past that you've said, oh, no, no, don't even? Don't bother. I'm just curious.
The one today would, the one today would be a conflict. But I can, let me think, um, a perfect example would be. Um, I have a. I I I have a nonconforming single family in a general residence lot. That has um. You know, i- i- it has, we we require fifteen hundred square feet or five thousand square feet per unit. And this is a five thousand square foot lot, and I wanna bring, I wanted an exemption for variance because I'm having a hard time. And this lot, while it should only be able to accommodate one point one units. I wanna ask the planning board for six, or the zoning board for six, for a dimensional variance. Now, and then that's stuff I say like, why, why do you think? Well, it's a hardship because I, you know, times are hard. You know, that would be, that's that's happened, that happens weekly. And then something more um. I guess esoteric from our standpoint would be, um. I'm in a borderline. District junction. And there's gonna be a noise. Impact from this that is not what typically would be associated with a residential neighborhood. Do I think it's going to go? You know, go through, and then I would think back on like lawnmower man, you guys remember that? And I'm thinking, well, that was a good argument, because we're talking about, well, starting up a lawnmower for a minute. Is that something you'd normally hear in a neighborhood? And then in this case, where it may not be that kinda use, I'd say, no, no, I don't think. That would be well received, you're welcome to bring it, but if you're asking me my opinion, which remember, I work for them. Do, I work for everybody on this, um, that would be an example. Um, and I mean, actually, Brad, I keep going, but yeah, you get the idea.
Sure.
So one one thought I had was not not to review what Bill's doing. Because I agree with you, Jerry, he's he's doing a great job. But I'd like to know what's happening outside of our specific focus. And and so my thought is, when he gets one of these interesting interactions. Just make a simple entry in a spreadsheet or something. Some something simple like that, and. And maybe maybe monthly when we have our powwows, uh to say, by the way, you know, information from staff. We we had four cases that are for application potentials that never really materialized. And so we all can understand what the town is trying to do, even if they're half baked, we then understand the kind. Of sunlight that the town is getting, may maybe they're just brain fried and they hadn't thought it through, I don't know, but I I that's the point, I don't know. And and just to just to get a handle on that, and and so we can say, wow. Art, a case that did come in front of us, that's an easy one now, cuz we understand what the real field is like. I mean, that that's sort of the direction that that I'm hoping we can uh ask Bill to to do it, and if he's agreeable to do it.
Sure, of course, where what do you guys like?
So does that, does that make sense, guys? Yeah, almost like a phone log, just a one line entry.
Sure, right, it's duck soup, I can do it. I'll make a point to, and I can understand the board's curiosity that. If um, and if there's some conflict or something, we just won't put addresses in.
Right, right, just, you know. S one district, he wants to put in a three three thousand foot addition on on an S one district, I mean, yeah. Hello, right, cuz if there's a lot of building pressure out there. And we and we let one go through, how how much more credibility will there be for the other guys to put big lots or big buildings in?
Yeah, I think that's a, these are great points.
Yeah, the the only other thing I had on my list of things is a couple of of town projects. One is the the school down the end of Concord Street here, and the other one is a questionnaire that us old farts got. Uh in the mail the other day. And I don't, I don't know which one you wanna take on first, Bill, or if you've got another one that we should know about. You know anything about any of these, cuz you're the planner, you're supposed to know everything.
Yeah, yeah.
Could I ask, what what's your, are you talking about?
You're not an old fart, are you?
Oh, me, no, oh, no.
Sorry, just kidding.
Uh creeping up on middle age, allegedly, I think.
Think they sent it to me three different ways. To really rub it in.
Yeah. Uh, well, um, let's see, the firehouse is going for, all right, here's the funny thing about the firehouse. I I I have, thank God, not been involved with the app, all I did was proofread and help write the RFP. Um, but uh it's been reissued. Uh, and it came to the select board the other night, I don't know, last week or, no, I was in California, so two weeks ago. And the day after, I mean, everybody's like showing up at the door like with a check, like, I want it, right? And so the the, for whatever reason, there seems to be a lot of interest in it this year. Or this, well, yeah, this year, and so we we issued the last RFP about a year ago, so. Um, but I don't know anything more than that, I, nothing has been issued yet, I. Expect it will be in the next week or so. Um, I toured it today for the first time, um, I'd never been in that building all my time here. And the one, I, that's I knew about the shooting range and all other sorts of um. Interior decorating choices, they're very nice, but I I think that there are um. A number of people that are interested in that property, but I don't really have, I don't have anything for.
What what's the potential use that you're talking about here, is it commercial?
Well, it's down to, it's downtown overlay district now, so, you know, given the way it is. Um, you know, with downtown overlay, there, if you ask me, it's a very flexible property, if you can get by. The environmental um issues, which I I'm no expert on. But uh perhaps some of them can be left as is if undisturbed. And um, there's an other examples where the building would be. Uh removed and there may be uh costs associated with the cleanup. But that aside, and zoning wise. Jew is, you can do a lot of cool stuff with it, you could do a little mixed use project easily. That people would love, you could do a civic use, you could do a um. I mean, golly, you could, it's pretty flexible what you could do there. I mean, golly, you could, it's pretty flexible what you could do there.
Such a small lot and there's, and you can't, there's no onsite parking or anything.
That, well, that's, well, you're, you're.
Duck down on the ground and do some underground.
Exactly, exact, well, that's just it. And, and exactly, and do you go, I'm just saying that on paper, a lot of stuff could work. Uh, on the other hand, um, like I said, the unknowns of the contamination make removal. An issue. Because you pull it off and all of a sudden you find out there's something that's, you know.
The tribal or non-tribal, I think is what they call it. I, I've spoken to a couple of those at a previous job and I was like, it's going to cost how much? Well, if it's this, it's.
Yes, that's all true, but remember the town was not asking gazillions for this either.
Right.
The town was very, and, and on the last deal that fell through. We were very fair on including the remediation costs against the purchase price. So I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was significant and, um. But the bottom line is, no, you got nothing from me on this. I, I, I don't know anything. I'm sorry. I like, I pride myself on helping you guys along. No help here. Um, but, uh. On the, um, sixty one summer street, which is the, the school, um. We did a technical assistance grant with M A P C to help the existing board. Or existing committee that was a reuse committee, uh, to define potential uses, not recommended. Because this was a, a, an assignment from the select board and they didn't want. Recommended, they wanted what could work here, what are potential uses? And they can't, and they're supposed to go up with five or six or whatever. And there's been a few hiccups there between the, uh, committee and the board, although I think. I think it'll be all right. On the other hand, they've invited me. Kind of like, Bill, we need you at the meeting next week, so I'll be going to their meeting. I'll find out what's going on. But, uh, by and large, that, uh, parcel can, uh, really. You, you could do a lot of residential type development there. I can't see. Um, uh, like an expansion of, for example, the downtown overlay district. With there's a commercial element, it's not appropriate in that location. But the big issue in the end is going to be, A, do we keep the building? Is the building, the costs that are associated with remediating the building worth it to the surrounding community? If so. And the developer could come in, develop more of a multifamily, um, project here. What can benefit the town? How do we make this a net plus? And then the, the, really the fourth is. If you remove the building, and this is kind of, there's a bit of irony here. If you remove the building, are you changing the character of the neighborhood by putting just single family? Units there, which is what the surrounding neighborhood is. But the neighborhood knows it as a school and it's this building. So, uh, again, that's a, you're getting it from a lot, you know, both sides of that, so that'll be interesting. Um, I'm going to the meeting next week. They want me to come in terms of their alternatives and the zoning viability of it. So I'll have more on that.
We're gonna be there.
Zoning viability, yes. And I don't mean around pegging the squirrel hole. I'm talking about this is like the real deal, so, um, I, I, I hope to have something soon and I will share it as soon as I do, because I love. Moving any sort of initiative that we've been working on forward, but, um. That, that's also one that, um, is, is on the front burner. Uh, you may recall, um. Let's see, two to six powder mill, which we, we gave a, a variance to a couple of months ago. Uh, very slowly but surely. We seem to be moving forward. They're approved at the planning board. There are a lot of hiccups still. And things to be cleared. On the other hand. This is a type of project that, you know, a small town like Mayfair is significant and it's going to take some time. Uh, but. You know, one step forward, two steps back, not quite. But we're, we're, we're crawling forward on that and I anticipate we'll have some more. Well, I'll tell you what, with that particular project, watch conservation commission. That's going to be the key. It's not, planning board's done. It's kind of going to be conservation commission.
Hasn't that project changed quite a bit since, uh, they brought it in front of the zoning board?
No, the, the difference, the difference that, since it's been in front of us has been, um. They, it was a mixed use project when it came in front of us. If you remember on the, the second floor, there was. And the reason we put. The reason we put the mixed use on the second floor and not just the first floor, which is the goal of most downtown overlay district projects. Uh, is because they were still applying under the mixed use category, um. Because where they're located, that's not necessary. They can apply on the multifamily category. The idea, as I think a, a couple of the board brought up during the hearings, this is not a walk, this is not an ideal. Walk by retail location yet anyway. This is more of an area that's on, at the gateway. So that was causing the bulk of the problems was the multifamily, I mean, was the, uh, mixed use. So by going to multifamily, uh, they kept the same design, the same footprint, lessened the impact. Um, in terms of traffic, um, and, uh, safety concerns. And the planning board changes since this board issued the, um, their approval for the variance. The planning board changes were they want a gate. Uh, for the entrance onto Waltham Street. They don't want traffic going in and out on the Waltham Street.
That's good. That's very good.
So that was one there. The second change was they didn't, they wanted to take the, um. Commercial area out of it. They felt the commercial was compounding the problems. Unnecessary and didn't meet the goals of the town as well as having. A multifamily residential would. And the multifamily residential, the footprint and the overall square footage is the same as when this board approved it.
Very good, good. So, back to the old fart survey. You know anything about that?
No. What? Me? No.
I'm still processing that I actually got it, so I haven't been able to open it.
I submitted mine today.
It, it looked to me like it was, uh, it looks like it's a precursor to try to do something with the senior center.
Yeah.
What did you guys get? Wait a minute, maybe I don't know about this.
Oh, I sent mine back as well. We got email notices, we got note, text messages. And then it somehow they got my, they, they figured out that I was an old fart. And, and then we got a paper copy. Somebody, I think it's UMass Boston, put it together.
Oh, oh, that, yes.
So you do know something about it?
I do, I know, I do know about that. I didn't know it went out. Yes, I can tell you about that.
So did we all get one? Paige, you didn't get one, did you? No, you're, you're, you're not an old fart yet.
Everybody over age fifty go.
Stop rubbing it in, Paige, come on. I try to keep up with the young stories. Yeah, okay, I know what you're talking about. That is nothing to do with the sixty one summer street. That is the senior. Center task force received a grant. And with that grant, they wanted, they hired UMass, um. It must have been their, their, their planning or, 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 um. Uh, community development, um, programs. They hired them to go ahead and conduct a survey, so that's what it is. Yeah, 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 okay. I don't know anything about that. Could somebody send me a copy of that? I'd like to see that.
There's a link. Maybe I can find my email and send you the link. I sent in the form already.
Right, as long as it doesn't commit me to being a geezer.
No, it, it was a lot of questions about. Uh, do you have enough money to, to get along now? Have you had any periods of hardship? Can you get around? What transportation do you use? You know, do you drive your own car? Uh, do you live in a single family? What kind of residential stuff do you live in? Those kind of questions? And then they had three or four focused only on the senior center. And since I'm not old enough, I'm only seventy, I'm not old enough to use the senior center. I have no idea what they do. Right? And so I beat up the senior center as, you know, I've heard it exists, but. I mean, I don't use the facilities. Can they do my taxes for me? I don't know anything about them.
And, and. Well, it's interesting you ask that. Because there's, uh, uh, they are, it is a extraordinarily well-used senior center. And Amy has done a fantastic job where she used to double up all programs there, A. And B, there, uh, there are tax assistance programs. I happen to know that.
I, I just use that as an example, because I don't think I've ever been in the facility. You know, not that I need to go in there, I just, I don't know what they do.
They do classes, all kinds of classes and, uh, you can go there and. Get COVID tests and. Yeah, you should go check it out. Well, in Action Unlimited, I think once a month, they have a section in the paper. Of all the activities that are going on there. Check it out. You don't know what you're missing.
Yeah.
You might, you might like being sitting here, Tara Duzuba, you know, class.
Paintings are, our paintings are going to be at the library in April. What you're missing.
But, but anyways, I, I was curious as the focus of that. You know, relative to the, to the summer street property and whatever else they were doing. Because it, some of the questions seemed rather disjointed. They didn't, it didn't flow as to where they were trying to get. Information to make something happen.
Yeah, this is not connected with sixty one summer street. All right. This is just, this is just trying to, you know, uh. I personally, from a planning standpoint, I would really like to. Work on the senior center location and getting some really cool. Um, sustainable. Facility and, 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 and stuff there. But this is probably the first step in building a, uh, foundation to do that. Um, and I forgot all about it. That was, um, been underway for a little. Been a while, so, but it's, yeah, answer it, send it back in and.
So, so Bill, uh, thank you, Paul. So Bill, you do know, I think, or maybe you don't. I chair the senior senate committee and I've kept my mouth shut this whole time.
I did not.
Yeah, yeah, I, I do chair that. So Bill, if you would, if you would like to have a position. Uh, a non-voting, uh, but, but a well-heard position.
Non-evening, non-evening position?
Oh, it would be an evening position. We meet every other Thursday. What are you doing on Thursdays?
Jerry, Jerry, I have four night meetings this week. I cannot do any more night meetings. Oh, I can't. I will help you any way I can. I cannot have night meetings. I will be like an omelet when you get me in here next time. No. I can't. But I will help you. I'll be happy to help you anytime and do anything I can do to help you and I.
Yeah, we, we will reach a time when we do need to talk to you. We're not there yet. We're setting up, uh, small working groups, we're gathering data. But another month to six weeks, I might need to talk to you.
Absolutely, anytime. And there's probably some younger members around that might not be, well, I can't think of any on this board except. But, um, if, yeah, whatever I can do to help, but that was, that I was correct, right? What I said, that was you guys?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, it's us.
So maybe you should send him a copy of the questionnaire.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Can you do that?
I can do that. I can, I'll send you the link.
Yeah.
I, I just got my questionnaire in the mail a couple of days ago.
You want mine, Bill? I'm, I'm sure I got it by mistake. I'm, I'm in denial anyway.
Yeah, mine was by mistake too. I'm under fifty, yeah, right.
So. That, that's all I had for this evening. I think, Bill, you wanted to mention some upcoming hearings that we've got.
Hearing, uh, the here, we do have hearing stuff, nothing interesting other than. Uh, nothing out of the ordinary, I should say, other than an appeal. We do have an appeal coming up and I'm not going to get into it specifically because I just sent it out ahead so you could peruse it. But the boards. I just want you to think about this for next month, because, um, the boards. Charge on this is basically. You're hearing an appeal of our building commissioner, the town's building commissioner's decision. Okay, so the building commissioner goes out, he makes a decision on A, B, or C. Why is zoning board hearing it? Because the building commissioner is the zoning commissioner also. We, I, I, a couple of you were on when our, we had our last one, which is probably three or four years ago. And I still get hate mail. Um, but, um. This is a, um, an appeal of the building, uh, commissioner's decision that. I mean, you can pretty much get it from the, um. Yeah, so what you're going to be voting on after you hear the evidence is, um. You agree with the appeal or you do not agree with the appeal? It's different in that, um. You know, it's, it's different, it's not a variance, it's not a special permit, similar. Protocol, we're going to run it the same way, we're going to public input, hearings. Uh, we're going to have the building commissioner there and town council will be there. But, uh, it, it, it will be interesting and a good experience. So, but that's what you're going to be looking at now. Other factors that come up, um, as can in any of these cases. You know, uh, that are outside our jurisdiction. It's like, no, we're looking at the zoning and that's what we're looking at. Oh, 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 wait, glad you mentioned that. Um. If April, uh, our date is going to be, I think the twenty second, was it? Let me see here.
Yep.
Okay, May, now may we have a problem? Which means we have a solution hopefully. Um, May twentieth is our town, uh, no, not May twentieth. Let's see, um. May, yeah, May twentieth is town meeting. Okay, that is not our normal meeting day. However, a week from that, May twenty seventh is Memorial Day. Um. Now I have planning board the next night, so I can't do that. Um, but we may want to do a meeting, um. Maybe Thursday before or something. I'm going to send out some dates and we got plenty of time ahead. But just keep that in mind, okay? We're going to want to change our meeting day. Because nobody's going to want to come here on Memorial Day and it's against the law, anyway.
So that particular hearing for that meeting is the artist's tentative.
At the, at the moment, yeah.
They're looking for renewal.
Yeah, I asked them to hold off from, they want to come in in April and ask them to hold off because we have two, uh. What do we have? We have two petitions.
Yeah, they're going again, another year. They, they haven't figured out. They haven't figured out their application yet as to what they're going to ask for, but they're starting it according to the email chain I saw.
Yes. Yeah, the, the, the uncertainties make them want to apply earlier. Um, and, um, but I, I don't remember what the other two.
I thought we only had this one you already sent out for the April meeting.
We have two.
Saying two, but I thought it was just the one.
No. I, I, something that came in today or yesterday. I don't, but it wasn't anything that jumped out, so it's probably one of our typicals.
Now, as far as, you know, who's going to run the meeting in April? Um, I'm going to be on the road. Hopefully I'm going to have either cell service or, you know, uh, wifi service somewhere. But I don't know what state I'm going to be in. I'm doing a road trip around about. I'm going to chase the wildflowers in Southern California and Arizona and stuff. And that's after we hopefully catch the eclipse somewhere, so I, I don't know where I'll be. And so Paige, I might put you on the spot.
Yeah, that, that's fine. Thanks for the heads up.
Don't, don't say. Don't, don't say it so easily. You, you, you've read the application.
I know.
And that's just the surface of it. And, and so, you know, you, you need to be ready for a, a, a good meeting.
And if something else came in.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Bill, I'm guessing there'll probably be a long meeting, so to the extent we have any ability to. Not have more than one other agenda item on that, it may be great.
I will do my best. I think I can do it.
Thank you.
So I wish I could remember what the second one, it came in at the end of the day, right when I was walking out.
So before, too long, Paige, maybe we oughta interact offline and come up with that script.
Yeah, I agree. Um, Friday is, Paul, I'm pretty, I don't work on Fridays, so anytime on Friday, maybe we could put our heads together.
All right, that, it would have to be this Friday, because we're gonna disappear Monday next week.
Jeez, where the heck are you going?
Wow.
We're, we're going, we, we got a pickup truck with a cap on it. We're gonna, you know. Go down to Tennessee.
You're gonna go to Area fifty-one and just see what happens?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Now, now, we're, we're going to Death Valley via Tennessee. Cause I got a, I got a daughter in Tennessee and then we're gonna chase the eclipse. Hopefully it'll be sunny in Oklahoma. Cause that's, uh, on the Ozarks and then Oklahoma, we wanna check that out. And then we wanna go the southern route, stay away from the, the immigrants and just check the dead wildflowers out. And then go up through Nevada to my sister's place in Wyoming. And, and then hopefully be back before Christmas.
Jeez.
So no, really, we'll be, we'll be back hopefully the first part of May.
That's some safari.
Yeah, so, get out of town, you know, what's that?
Let, let me add one thing. I've got the, I also, I, I, Bill, you said our next meeting is April twenty-second, right?
I think, yeah.
Yeah, I have a conflict that night that I can't make. I cannot make that meeting.
So, if that's the way of shaking out, Bill, can we simply postpone the hearing?
It, it's a physical, I, I physically cannot, it's not something I can even change. It's out of my control. I cannot make that night.
Yeah, cause if I.
Very willing to accept that.
So you, if I'm borderline and Jerry's out, then you're down to four.
Yeah.
That, that doesn't give.
Let me find out. I, I, let me look at this tomorrow when I have it in front of me. And, but I agree, I agree. There's no, you know, if we have to postpone it, we, we open it, we postpone it, or we give the applicant their, their choice. You know? But Jerry's out and Paul's probably out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I, I have two, I have one question about the application, um, that is, it'll be sort of in general. Um, so we're not, we're not talking anything specific about the, the meeting. Um, there is a reference to, um, from, I think in Rick's letter. Where he's referencing some, um, uh, forty-eight.
Yeah.
Uh, sections, uh, six, seven, eight, and eleven. Can we get a, um, a, a real copy of what those things say as opposed to, um. Of the information that I have, which is, uh, like, like Paul has, which is on a slide?
Yeah.
The, the actual real. You, you can go to mass.gov. You can go to mass.gov and pick it out pretty easy. About, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll do a staff report too, Brad, but yeah, you can go on mass.gov and, and get it, it's just. So just, you'll, you'll hate chapter forty-eight worse than all of us.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be something that everybody's gonna wanna look at, because it's pretty important.
You're, I, I, and I would have done a, I'll do a staff report. It's just that I wanna send it early so you guys weren't caught off guard.
Yeah, so if you just Google it, it's M G L. Uh, and, and just typing in M G L and then you, they'll, if it ends up at the MassDog website for the general laws. You then just type in forty-eight and whatever section you want, there's little drop-down boxes for that. Okay, yeah, the other reason I was asking is because I think it's something that, that should be sent out to the whole board. For everybody to review, because everybody's gonna wanna look at that.
I'll, I'll dig into it some more after tomorrow. And I'll get it out. I just, um, tomorrow night, I'm, I mean, between tonight and tomorrow night, I'm gonna be wrapped. But, um, uh, I'll get it out to you guys. I understand and it makes total sense.
One of the things that I, I mentioned to Bill about this upcoming case is he's extremely general in the application as to what he's citing. He's, he's citing forty-eight and the zoning laws. I don't know what section he's justifying it, and if he could, if Bill could get that from the guy. It'll give us a better handle on what the argument's gonna be.
Yeah, I, I'll get something more. Let's not go anymore about this particular case. I understand what you want and, and, and you've, you're, you're absolutely correct with this and I'll make sure you get it. Uh, the only reason, I knew there was gonna be a certain amount of this, because I got it and I'm like, well, I want the board and the attorney to know that this came in. Cause we don't get appeals that often. Last was the cookies.
The cookies?
Are you selling Girl Scout cookies, Bill?
Oh, no. I eat them.
Oh.
Yeah, see, think long enough, you'll remember that one.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's all I had, guys. Yeah, if there's anything else, speak up or else we'll close the meeting. But I really appreciate your time this evening. I, I just wanted to make sure we all. Were thinking the same kind of stuff, because the zoning laws are so weird sometimes.
It was also gooey at the beginning too, but now we've uncovered that April twenty-second may not be able to be a hearing night for that relatively important hearing.
Yeah.
Well, there's also another, uh, possibility where I could just shove it to another night too, or we shove it off a month. We don't have to go a month. We could shove it off to another night. Let me just get my head wrapped around everything that's there. I'll send out some possibilities and, um. We'll make it, you know, no problems, only solutions.
Okay.
And, and Tany, um. Want me, want me to send you something for Friday to think about? You know, draft something rough and then you work on it?
Yeah, that, that sounds great. Um, I'll get, yeah, we can communicate over emails. I'll probably be easiest, because this Friday I'll actually be traveling. Schedules are opposite.
Yeah, all right. So thank you very much, all of you guys, for, for hanging in here tonight. And I, I really appreciate it. So do we have to formally close a meeting, boss?
We should formally close it.
Making motion to close the meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Jerry seconds. Uh, let's see, Brad, yes, no?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes. So again, thank you all, the meeting's closed. Have a good night.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, folks.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.